Good evening. Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Education Board Work Session, July 29th, 2015. It is 6:15. At this time, would you please rise and let us recite the Fledge of Allegiance together? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, I want to let you all know, ladies and gentlemen, that tonight's work session is a historic occasion for the Clayton County Board of Education. Beginning with this work session, our meetings of the board, with the exception of executive sessions and board retreats, will be livestreamed for public viewing on the school's district website. Access to the broadcast can be followed on the district's app. Please note that the livestream broadcast has a 30-second delay from the moment it is videoed to when it will air. As such, I would ask those who would like to follow the meeting on their handheld devices to please turn the sound down so as not to interrupt our proceedings. Thank you. At this time, I will read the ethics statement. In accordance with Board Policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. At this time, I would like for us to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion? Dr. Anderson?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we adopt the agenda.
Ms. Baker, is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the agenda. Please vote. It looks like Ms. Williams' light is working tonight. It's a unanimous vote. Okay. At this time, we will recognize public officials.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Terry Baskin, who is our Clayton County Tax Commissioner. Would you please stand to be recognized, Mr. Baskin?
Thank you.
At this time, on our agenda, we need to go into executive session. In executive session, we will discuss the future acquisition of real estate and we will discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary actions, or dismissal. Those are our two items for this evening. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? Dr. Anderson?
So I move, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second? Ms. Baker?
My second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded that we go into executive session to discuss land acquisition and personnel matters. Please vote, your pleasure. All right, it's a unanimous vote. We are going to executive session and we will try to come out as soon as possible.
Madam Chair, I think we have another elected official out there.
I'm sorry. Well, let us vote first. Let us, oh, well, we voted, I'm sorry, unanimous, okay? Is there another elected official that's in the audience that we did not recognize? Oh, I'm sorry. How could we miss that handsome gentleman, young gentleman right there? Please stand up, Mr. A.D. Dixon, our Jonesboro Councilmember, Mayor of Platoon. We're sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we had a delay, but the board is back in session. And we're back to discuss the recommendations from executive session where we discuss future acquisition of real estate and personnel matters. Dr. Beasley, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. We have four recommendations on tonight. We'd like to first recommend for the position of Academic Coordinator for World Languages, Anna Cox.
Do I have a motion for the superintendent's recommendation? Ms. Baker?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Anna Cox for World Language Academic Coordinator.
That's correct.
Do I have a second, Ms. Burrow?
I second the motion.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Ms. Anna Cox. I'm sorry, Ms. Cox, we need to get this correctly. As the Academic Coordinator for World Languages, please vote, your pleasure. Ms. Williams, is your, okay? And it is a unanimous vote.
Ms. Cox, you are standing to be recognized. Congratulations. Our next recommendation is for the Assistant Principal at North Clayton High School. We'd like to recommend Aris Pitts.
I'm going to move that we accept this superintendent's recommendation of Aris Pitts as the Assistant Principal at North Clayton High School. Do I have a second? Ms. Johnson?
I overwhelmingly second that.
All right, it has been moved and properly seconded that we accept Aris Pitts as the Assistant Principal at North Clayton High School. Please vote, your pleasure. All right, again, we have a unanimous vote.
Ms. Pitts?
Ms. Pitts.
Congratulations.
Go Eagles!
Our next recommendation is for the position of Assistant Principal at Bab Middle School. I'd like to recommend Vicki Glover.
I have a motion from Ms. Johnson.
I say B-A-B-B, Bab, Bab.
That would be a motion to accept that.
Do I have a second, Ms. Dr. Anderson?
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent for Ms. Vicki Glover. Please vote, your pleasure. And again, we have a unanimous vote.
Vicki Glover, you are you, Vicki? Standing to be recognized. Congratulations. Our last recommendation is for the Assistant Principalship at Riverdale Elementary. We'd like to recommend Monica Ward.
Dr. Beasley, I'm gonna move that we accept Monica Ward, your recommendation for Monica Ward as the Assistant Principal at Riverdale Elementary. Do I have a second? I see Mr. Christmas is like...
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Monica Ward as the Assistant Principal at Riverdale Elementary School. Please vote. Okay, I think I voted twice, but anyway, that person voted yes. And it is a unanimous vote.
Ms. Ward, congratulations.
I would like to say to the, those are all of the recommendations from executive session? Okay. Do we, wait, let me ask Dr., I mean, excuse me, Mr. Doyle, for the property issue. Do we need to, do we need to vote on that? That's what I'm asking.
Was the administration seeking approval to move forward on the utility easement?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if sufficient terms were given other than just to proceed on it.
Okay.
Do you have, can I see the document you have?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the easement request by the Clayton County Water Authority.
Do I have a motion, Ms. Baker?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent for the land easement at, is that Sequoia? Dr. Beasley, is that Sequoia?
Sequoia Middle.
At Sequoia Middle School.
And Dr. Anderson?
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the easement at Sequoia Middle School. Please vote. Ms. Bowles? Okay, it is a unanimous vote. That we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
That concludes our recommendations.
At this time, I will turn the, turn this over to Dr. Beasley for updates to the board.
Okay, at this time, we'll have Dr. Wiley. She'll come and respond to any questions relative to magnet schools and school choice.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Beasley, members of the board. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, Dr. Wiley?
Yes.
Since we are doing some streaming, can you maybe give us a little synopsis of what you have so that the people that might be watching on television will know what we're discussing? Just a brief synopsis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The documents that were submitted to you will be published on our website in maybe a week or so after school starts, but what you have is an outline of the various magnet programs that we have in our district. And we did update the board last month regarding our magnet programs and the various ones that we have. And what we're working on is ensuring that we have a seamless feeder program for all of our magnet schools. And then also what you have is a document regarding the certification program. We have one school in our district that is nationally certified by Magnet Schools of America, while all of our other schools are going to be required to obtain that particular certification. And we have Elite Scholars Academy, Cape Hey School, the Arts, Unidos, the Language School, that have submitted their applications. And then we have two, three schools, two or three schools that will submit in December and then two others that will come on board and submit in June of 2020.
All right.
Ms. Corrie, it may be helpful for our viewers to remind them that all the documents are on the website on eBoard.
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
I was just gonna ask if the, when promoting these magnet schools, will it have on there the timeline so parents can get, like, parents are starting this year, their child is not gonna be in the magnet school, but they need to know that starting December or whenever the date is, that they can start getting that stuff ready so they're not at the last minute, you know, trying to get in? Because I've heard people before go, "Oh, I really wanted to go to such and such school, but the deadline was over," you know, so I'm trying to look at the best way to get that information out.
Yes, ma'am, just for your information and our viewers' information, we do send a postcard to every single household in the district in August or September, letting them know that the application is open in October. And then we also place it on our website. And then we send another postcard, letting them know the deadline is coming, please submit your application. So we do communicate via postcards, email, and any messages that our communications department help us send out. You're welcome.
Ms. Bowles?
One of my favorite things about our district is some of our work in this choice space, just making sure that kids and their families have access to schools based on their niche or interest. What I'm going to be equally as concerned with is making sure that we watch how spending flows in those directions. So, you know, the per pupil expenditures that are required of ESSA to make sure that we can see what the spending is like in Elite Scholars versus Callaway, which isn't, right? Like, I'm just gonna wanna see how the, how these magnet designations are impacted and reflected in our spending. So just thinking about, you know, I see some cool programming, math programs, beta clubs, you know, I believe what's good enough for one is good enough for all. So just, that's some of what's on my mind.
Absolutely.
I want to make a comment before you leave. That is, I'm very proud of the programs that we have now, but what I am not proud of is the fact that when I look at that chart in regards to magnet choices, there are none in College Park, Forest Park, or Riverdale. And, and I know that we're probably working in that area, but I would like to see it's, see us speed it up a little bit because in particular, I'm looking at North Clayton, and I see that at one time, the board agreed that we were going to have an aviation magnet program at that school. I know that we've had some conversation about it going in another direction with early college, but just, but I'm looking at Jonesboro High School and I see that they're going to have two things at their school. Therefore, there can be two at North Clayton. It's called North Clayton, they're the North Clayton Eagles, we're in the shadow of the airport. Therefore, we agreed, this board agreed, that we would have aviation. Therefore, there should be aviation at North Clayton High School. And I see that, you know, we have put on the, that we've added North Clayton Middle as a early college middle school, but North Clayton Middle School won the drone competition, and they also, I believe, won the robotics competition. So that in itself tells me that there should be another program. And, and like, that is my district and I don't want to, we all represent our 55,000 students, we all have different districts as well, but that is the area that is lacking programs. And I would really like to see a very quick turnaround with having those, having some programs out there. And maybe those principals need to meet with their, with the feeder schools because it would seem to me that there should be some type of a feeder pattern to, to go to their school. There needs to be some agreement because what I'm tired of is, I'm tired of the students on my end of the county having to, to choose to go to the other end of the county. And we need some equity and some equality as far as our programs are concerned.
I will let you know that Dr. Guiney is meeting with the North Clayton feeder pattern the end of August to discuss their aviation program.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Wiley.
Dr. Wiley, you may want to share that Forest Park High School is an AP...
Capstone.
Capstone School. North Clayton is an early college academy. Riverdale, while they may not have a magnet designation, they have the, the Brown, the Brown Academy, and they had some of the largest number of students to have earned an associate degree.
And, and following up with that, you're absolutely correct, Dr. Beasley, it's just that I don't think it's, that gets advertised. And I, and I'm tired of hearing people in my neighborhood say, "We need to go somewhere else," because we talk about going to charter schools and choice, but you can't get a better choice than what Clayton County Public Schools is offering right now. We have the best choice, but I want a little bit more on my end of the table to choose from. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Wiley.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Next, we'll have our safety and security quarterly report, Chief Traynor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Beasley, colleagues and community members. I've submitted my executive summary for your review, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have relative to that report. There are no questions?
You can't get away that quick, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what my, my question is. I know we had to go through some training, I'm still concerned about our, what will be our protocol with active, when are we going to start with our active shooter training, drills or whatever for our students?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we're about to start a new year in safety.
Yes, ma'am, we're actually going to start those drills in September. And the process is, you know, we're looking at the examples of Parkland where we had students and we had staff members who really didn't know what to do. So we're gonna start on basically educating our students and letting them know what the protocols are by having the first stage of it being a Level 3 lockdown and ensuring that they know that their roles are, shelter in place, turn your cell phones off, secure the doors, close the blinds, you know, there are some step-by-step processes that we have to adhere to to ensure our students' safety. We're also ensuring that the support personnel know what their roles are. So that's, that part of it, but we're planning on doing a drill a semester to ensure that we not only are educating the students and the staff, but we're meeting the state requirements as we see those requirements are gonna be significantly, significantly strengthened in the upcoming years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we'll have our 2019-2020 School Readiness Update, Dr. Simpson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Beasley, members of the board, colleagues, community, and viewers, public viewers. You received an update as it relates to the school readiness report. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have at this time, and will be provided a synopsis. Madam Chair, if you need one.
Just give us a little brief synopsis, Dr. Simpson.
Well, number one, because we've been here before as it relates to opening schools, so we know exactly what's going to take place starting tomorrow with pre-planning. On August 12th, when we receive children, obviously, we'll be ready for students to be taught and children to teach.
August 5th.
5th.
August 5th.
5th, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm wanting an extra week.
No extra weeks.
We'll be ready for teaching and learning on August 5th. And August 12th as well.
Second week of school.
Certainly. In, in addition to that, now, tomorrow, we're starting out with, I think it's going to be a very, very exciting and informative and enthusiastic back-to-school rally for all of our teachers. We have two sessions, one in the morning for elementary teachers, and then one in the afternoon for our middle and high school teachers. We have a presenter, a speaker, Jeremy Anderson. I'm sure you've seen the information, certainly invite you out to one of those sessions. We want to do that personally and intentionally because we feel that this will change the way teachers pre-plan. You read his bio, I don't need to speak anymore about that, but it's certainly going to touch their hearts, touch their minds, and we want them to be prepared as they begin to, you know, compose and build and strengthen their lesson plans as it relates to relationships with children. In addition to that, you've seen our first week of our school activities listed. We've emphasized, obviously, the purpose of appropriate dress, expectations that are included in that particular report. One of the things that Chief Traynor did not mention, because we're recipients of a grant by the State of Georgia, a school safety grant, something that you may have seen in the district before, we feel it's important for us to be able to safely and securely supervise the perimeter of our buildings. We, it'd be most helpful and aided by the use of golf carts. Principals have been taking money out of, I mean, using co-funds and fundraisers of such to be able to purchase those, but we've positioned or propositioned the state to be able to use these golf carts as a means to rotate these staff members out so that when people across the, enter on our campuses, they're greeted by someone that's a school employee to question or inquire about the businesses they're actually gonna be conducting on that day. That's important, obviously, as we try to increase, or with intent of increasing safety and security in our building. So you see that listing in the report as well. You know, we're ready to go with athletics. We started out, obviously, with softball, football, cheerleading and band, and we're, we're primed and ready to go and we'll start out the first week with a winning season, with winning games for all of our athletic activities and looking forward to another exciting year.
Okay, Mr. Stroker?
Good evening, Dr. Simpson. Where do we stand with the air conditioning and the HVAC systems with, with the schools? Like, have we identified the, the problems that we had last year? Are we identifying those schools as potential problems?
I, I can say this from a general perspective, but I think if Mr. Cobble is here, if we're not running, oh, Mr. Cobble is here, perfect. And I'll just reiterate a statement that Dr. Beasley makes all the time. You know, the air conditioning's not working at the time we need it to work in the most is now, obviously. I can assure you and Mr. Cobble will certainly reiterate this. We assess and diagnose all of those prior to our starting of the school year. We're up and ready to go and obviously, we'll have some challenges, but we're ready to start the school year receiving teachers on tomorrow and children on the 5th, but I'll let Mr. Cobble respond.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, Community. I will speak, say, in the last two years, a lot of our problem schools that we've had, equipment was 25, 30 years old. You guys have proved to remove a lot of that. So I'm looking forward, as you should be, to this year be a great opening. Last year was a lot better than the year before. We're looking for this year to be as, as well as, as good as last year. So we don't, we don't anticipate having the problems we had two years ago, because a lot of that stuff has now been changed. So I say thank you because it was tough, but our guys, they will respond.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Baker?
My question goes back to, what is our plan to talk to students about behavior and what we expect from them? I think all children go to the level of what you expect. And, and why I'm saying that is because some things that might have been seen as joking and playing when I was in school or you was in school will get you in a lot of trouble nowadays. Things you say, do, you know? And I, I want our children not to be happy where they're at, but just to be aware that this kind of statement can get you in trouble. And I, I think we need to tell our children that. You know, they see things on TV or media or whatever and even cyberbullying, that kind of stuff, and they think it's a joke and, and they don't realize. And then they turn around and a parent gets a call going, "Well, your child said this and now we're looking at, you know, sexting or, or really hardcore things." And I just wanna make sure that we've got something set up, you know, for the appropriate age level for the kids that we're talking to. I mean, what you're gonna say to a kindergartner is not the same thing that you're gonna say to, you know, somebody in high school.
Yes, ma'am. And, and you're absolutely correct. So one of the things, and certainly, and Dr. Mia is prepared to add if she chooses, it, it's important for us to make sure that we emphasize the appropriate behavior first. We have to teach children how to behave before we issue consequences. The Code of Student Conduct as it's written is an opportunity for teachers to be able to not only teach the Code of Student Conduct, but use those as examples and scenarios for what it is that you either do not do or do not say. All of those are examples that are, that's included throughout the Code of Student Conduct, and it's by age level, ain't no age level appropriate. So as teachers are administering the Code of Student Conduct, and we cover that on the first day of school, the second day of school, then that's a prime opportunity for them to be able to provide them with examples, suggestions, ideas on how to either navigate through certain situations, things that are inappropriate, who you should go to if this is said, if you hear this. And then, and in addition to that, middle and high school...
And then, uh and in addition to that, middle and high school principals um typically have uh school assemblies or grade-level assemblies. And during those grade-level assemblies, obviously, they share with them their expectations from a general perspective, but they'll highlight some of the particular areas as we know that that might be hot buttons. We know that social media is something that they have to cover every single year. And 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 all aspects of it, providing them with examples of what's not gonna be tolerated. Last year might be something completely different than this year because it continues to evolve. And those are the things that obviously we have to continue to be astute and on top of. We share that information with the principals, but many of them are always on top of that because that's what they deal with every single day.
I just wanna just follow up in in essence, just in summary. So are we going to go back to what I would say is the old-school way of teaching the rituals and routines within the first two days? Are we going through the handbook with our students at every school uh to go through the handbook and rituals and routines? Because you know, you're the first day you're going to send home all of those handbooks, all of those sheets that parents have to sign that I used to hate to have to do, you got two and three copies. But are we going, will we be allowing our staff to actually go through that with our students?
That's that's the intent, and that's 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 going to be the intentional means of ensuring that students understand that that is the ritual, those are the routines. And in order to do that, it has to be specific and detailed enough where a teacher has to spend time going over each and all of those particular uh violations in the code of student conduct so students will have a better understanding of what it means. Instead of just issuing it to them, they sign for it, take it home to the parents, get a signature, and bringing it back.
Okay, thank you. That's that's what I wanna know. I I'm gonna just point out one more thing because for those that might be uh watching this broadcast or this meeting, uh that one thing that I don't think we mentioned, but I know it's been sent to the public and that we will be starting, we're changing our starting time for the, it's elementary school is from seven forty-five to two fifteen, which is, that's the same, correct? But our middle school time has changed to eight fifteen, I mean, eight forty-five to three forty-five. And high school is eight twenty to three fifteen, that's correct. And then elite scholars has a different time. So that's the thing we wanna reiterate too, is that time change between high school and middle. And for any parents that are watching, please get those high school students to school on time. E- everybody needs to. And also, I guess we need to point out too that the first day of school, uh day one, we especially know that the elementary schools, especially the, you know, first timers, that to be aware of the traffic and plan accordingly to try and leave home early so that you can get your child to school early and on time. So I think, I don't think I see any other questions. Thank you so much, Dr. Simpson.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have the proposed agenda. We'll start with business services, Ms. Emma Benton.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Beasley, members of the board and community. The board has for review the June 2019 purchasing report. These reports are for your information only. On Report A and B is purchases that are over ten thousand dollars for consumable and non-consumable purchases. Are there any questions? Report C contains non-consumable purchases which are over fifty thousand dollars. These are contracts and they require the board approval. Are there any questions? In addition to the purchasing report, the board has a summary of the district's current financial status for June 2019. Our general fund comparison slide, the district's preliminary and general fund balance as of June 30th, 2019 is sixty-four point five million dollars. Again, these are preliminary numbers. Uh we are still working to close out fiscal year 2019. Um as we move further along, maybe with your August financial statements, we'll have final numbers for um fiscal year 2019. These reports are presented as a part of the consent agenda. Are there any questions the board may have?
Ms. Benton, I I really wanna, I I never learned how to do a cartwheel or a herky or any of that kind of stuff when I was in school. But I had to ask and Dr. Beasley a e- email today to just make sure that number, can you say that number one more time?
Preliminary, Ms. Gori.
That's how it works. Preliminary or not.
The preliminary number as of June 30th, 2019 is sixty-four point five million dollars. And as the board is aware, um last year this time, we were looking at very different numbers. And this is all a result for some of the decisions that the board made, Dr. Beasley made, and the staff um happily carried out.
Well, I'm gonna stand up and give you a standing ovation myself. So some people don't realize how bad the finances were here. So thank you so much, ma'am. I was very elated to see that part. Okay.
Preliminary, preliminary, Ms. Gori.
I I know it's preliminary, but it, you know, it's it's just like when you get your paycheck. That's always preliminary too, till you pay the bills. So I'm just happy. Okay.
Okay, okay, that's good. The next financial report is the SPOS revenue report. This reports include the monthly balance sheet in addition to the monthly cumulative and average collection to date. Are there any questions regarding the SPOS financial report? The next item on our agenda um refers to Georgia Fund One, which is a res- a resolution is presented for the board um as a part of the consent agenda. The district has maintained two investment accounts over the past several years, and we need to update um the resolution as it relates to these investments due to changes in personnel. Are there any questions? The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the military, the final adoption of the FY20 military. As the board is aware, we've had two public hearings, um one earlier today at eleven o'clock and one just before the board uh meeting tonight. Our third, as required by law, will be next week on August the 5th at five thirty. We are recommending, and the board adopted tentatively, uh I think on June the 24th, a military rate of twenty mils. Are there any questions?
No.
Wow.
Thank you, Ms. Benton.
You wanna do that cartwheel and herky?
I know, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our construction SPOS items, Mr. Ronic Johnson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Beasley. We have before you the SPOS construction update for the month of July. Nine payments were made totaling eleven million dollars, five hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-five, and twenty-six cents. There were no chain orders executed for this period. Are there any questions about ongoing projects?
And Mr. Christmas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh I think back uh before school was out, we were talking about the HVAC at Kendrick Middle School. Uh and it was supposed to be complete by the school starting, am I correct?
Correct.
Uh while I'm looking at it, it says we're only fifty-seven percent. So we will we be finished by the start of school?
A- absolutely. So we uh the payment lags behind work complete. That's intentional. Um all units are running. The building is clean. That was Ms. Doc- uh Dr. Dugger um Friday of last week, and we will be ready.
So that's for Kendrick, Callaway, and um uh Smith, right?
Correct.
And Kemp and Riverdale, and all they'll they'll be finished?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
N- n- like, for example, Riverdale, uh that is a phase construction, so there is a um a fall phase, which is the vocational building. Uh so when I say complete, uh the summer phase will be complete by August one.
Ms. Baker.
Um I just wanted an update on Jonesboro, if it's if it's on track. I drive by, and of course, it's not going as fast as I want it to go. But um patience is not one of my virtues.
Uh yes, it's uh on track. We are still targeting a November one completion date at the gymnasium. Um cafeteria and uh CTE spaces will be open in March. And then that will uh follow with the cafeteria, and then renovations of the existing classroom space will occur next summer.
Any other questions?
The next item on the agenda is the bid results for the safety and security headquarters and the uh improvements at Terror Stadium. Uh the superintendent recommends the low bid for immediate construction for total bid amount for one one million eight hundred thousand dollars. I would gladly answer any questions.
Okay, now this bid is for both the stadium and the and the headquarters.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now that Dr. Beasley has shown me what we're doing with the field. Okay, but I do have a question about the field though. Okay, so do we not have the field somewhere on the list of the new SPOS? Because you're doing, you're going to do some renovations to the structure around it, but I'm talking about the turf. Is there, do we have that going uh in the future to do something about the turf?
I- in the future.
So would you, can you do me a favor, because since I was uh worrying about, I thought that one point eight was for the end zone? Can you tell me, can you send us information on just about how much we're spending just for, because you're really just doing something to the end zone for Heinz Ward, correct? But I'm talking about as far as the field is concerned.
Correct.
Okay, can so can you send the board information? I wish you all had had a picture. Uh can we maybe have a picture next week before we vote so they'll see how nice it's going to be, Dr. Beasley?
Oh, you mean on the screen there?
Right, for the, for the end zone. I thought we were spending one point eight million to put those helmets on the, in the end zone. I was gonna just say y'all to go get the people that paint the uh Mercedes-Benz Stadium.
There's a lot more scope.
Right, right. Okay.
More than helmets, Ms. Gori. More than helmets.
I I look, I was just worried you all were going to rename the field Heinz Ward Field. But I just thought we were, you know, spending that much just for those two end zone. Okay, thank you. Oh, wait a minute, I see uh Ms. Bowles.
So, Ms. Gori, was what you were just asking, if what we're looking at is combining the field stuff and the and the headquarters, is that what you're? Is that what this is?
Yes, actually, when I looked at, I didn't, you know, I didn't read, I didn't do a good job reading. When I saw the price, I knew we were doing, we were going to convert the, do something to the field. But what I thought was, I thought we were actually going to replace the field now. I know that it's somewhere in the future possibly. So I thought we were spending one point eight million to replace the whole field, and then it's, we're doing the end zone. So then I was thinking, okay, we're just doing the end zones, that's too much money. But I neglected to read the other part about um.
But I appreciate you having this conversation because what it helped me understand is actually a fraction of the money is for the field and most of it is for the safety and security headquarters. Am I correct about that or no?
It's um, it's 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 almost a fifty-fifty split.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just to reiterate Ms. Gori's point, I would love to see a breakdown of what's appropriated where. Thanks.
And actually, we're also, we're going to renovate the stadium as well, Ms. Bowles. We're doing some things with the stadium. It was just, I neglected to read that part. I just saw that. I was thinking we were doing the whole field. And Mr. uh Joseph knows, I also want, I thought we were gonna do it, I thought we were gonna redo the track, you know, I don't want the asphalt. Ms. Baker.
Um I was just gonna ask, um in our list of of requests, um is it possible to get some kind of basic um designs of the security offices? Is that not, I mean, I don't wanna give any trade secrets, you know, from the chief or anything, but I haven't been in that building, so I'm not sure what we're taking it from to what we're taking it to.
Would be the new credit union?
Yeah, oh, you know, because I, I know what a credit union looks like, but I was never in it, so I was just wondering if we get an idea of what we're go- going from to what we're going to. And like I said, I'm not looking for any of the trade secrets, but yeah.
Yeah, we we have the uh drawing of the existing conditions and the uh foreplan for the uh final. We'll 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 provide that to you.
Yeah, we're we're hoping that it might be a A room or the BOE.
It won't be.
There's there's a nice conference room.
Ms. Gori's been pressing your superintendent about giving that location to safety and security, but we have other plans, so.
Okay.
All right, the uh final item is a resolution to modify fiscal, fiscal year fifteen's sort of BOE application. Um are there any questions?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ronic.
Next, we'll have our human resources uh information, Dr. Wilson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Beasley. The personnel changes report is for the period of June 13th, 2019 through July 17th, 2019. Um as of today, there are one hundred fifty-three teacher vacancies. Of those, one hundred fifty-three vacancies, I think fifty-six of them are special education vacancies. Um the one hundred fifty-three vacancies represents about a ninety-five percent fill rate for the beginning of school. Um for the teacher vacancies, we've worked with principals to identify long-term substitute teachers in the event those vacancies were not filled within the next week prior to school, and those substitutes will stay in place until we can find a qualified teacher. Also, I think later this week, maybe Wednesday or Thursday, there's a meeting scheduled to determine what supports and trainings that we can give to those substitute teachers to make certain that they are delivering quality instruction. For classified positions, there are um approximately one hundred thirteen classified uh positions. Of those, uh forty-five of those are paraprofessionals, uh about twenty-five are bus drivers, eight of those are uh bus monitors, and um school nutrition has about thirty-five vacancies. And I'll be happy to any, answer any questions you may have about the personnel changes report.
Dr. Wilson, the only one question that I just wanted to find out was about new teacher orientation. I know that uh you all are still in the hiring process. What are are, what are we doing about those people that would uh need to fulfill the new teacher orientation?
They do have, I think it's evening sessions they'll have for those teachers to make up who weren't there the last week.
Ms. Bowles.
Um my question is, what do you have planned for the first semester of meetings at the teacher, teacher retention task force?
One of them is interestingly enough, we've been in conversation with Dr. Dr. Richard Inglesall regarding uh the retention of teachers in quality and sorry, in urban school districts. And I don't know if you're familiar with who he is, but he's really the guru of teacher retention. So had a brief conversation with him today. So our first meeting will really take a look at, probably in September, I'm not sure if he'll be able to attend or not, but really developing the framework for all schools and departments to develop action plans to retain the employees in their specific uh locations.
Thank you.
All right, I would just like to add on that too, that I think something that's real simple as well is is just conversations. I know we say we have conversations, but if we really could get some input from teachers about why, you know, why they leave. And I know one of the things that we would need to, that specifically that we're going to have to work on, I would think is uh class size, because we did, you know, we, because of our budget, we increased the class size. So it would, it would be really nice. I know we have experts, but the experts aren't in the classroom. They're, you know, they've escaped, and that's why they're now the experts. why they're now the experts. But the real experts are the people that are in the classroom that have to teach every day. So, you know, I think we would, you know, benefit from those conversations. I wanted, this is actually not a question for you, I just wanted to, Dr. Simpson, you mentioned you're having the, you all are tomorrow, cause it really is kinda directly related, you all are doing the sessions with the new teacher, well, with our teachers. Is it possible that that will be recorded so that we could, you know, see the video? And Dr. Beasley?
I think it will be.
Okay, yeah, we would like to see that. Okay, that's, I don't think we have any other questions.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Next, we'll have School Leadership and Improvement, Perkins Four, and Dr. Ebony Chilis will come, I'll see TA E coordinator.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Beasley, CTS staff, members of the audience. Thank you for allowing me again to bring a brief update regarding CTA E and a recommendation. The funds allocated by the new Perkins Five legislation is being restructured by the Georgia Department of Education through a comprehensive local needs assessment tool for districts to implement after January 2020. So until then, the program improvement grant must be budgeted for activities to improve career technical and educate agricultural education programs. These funds must be limited to and are targeted for new and improved activities that promote pathway completion, attainment of industry credentials, work-based learning placements, post-secondary options for those high-skill, high-wage, and/or high-demand careers. Our data included the CTA E pathway completer data and end of the pathway assessment, EOPA data. Students are either completing the pathway or obtaining industry credentials, and that data is increasing every year from 46 to 58%, which is an 11-point gain, and that increases our graduation rate to 94%. In addition, these documents are located on eBoard that supports, that shows where we offer CTA E programming per high school and middle school, and then an A through Z CTA E acronyms list. Also, I've included our funding, which is a comparison chart for fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20. Fiscal year 20, the federal and state allocations are at $873,541. That's an increase of $24,300 for fiscal year, from fiscal year 19. So overall, the recommendation is in order to improve our CTA programs, increase pathway completion, attainment of industry-recognized credentials, work-based learning placements, is for the Board to accept the budget and release that for the necessary programs.
Do you have any questions? And thank you for those acronyms, cause you had me guessing today.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chilis. Next, we'll have Student Support Services, Dr. Sandra Minniss.
I don't have a voice today, sorry. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Beasley. Do you receive the list of the Student Tribunal panel members? We request that this item be placed in the consent agenda.
Do we have any questions?
Do you have any?
I wanna thank you for doing something, cause you know I usually vote against these. I'm glad to see that we have some behavioral specialists involved, because you know I've always said that the tribunal to me is just not fair to the students, cause everybody that's in there, they're all people that discipline. So I am glad to see some people that I think, you know, know about behaviors and can work, you know, in their best interest. So I'm glad to see that.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda items that we have to present.
All right, the next items are board matters, and the first one is Policy Series A. This is the first read, but if you'll look on the, if you'll notice, there are no changes submitted. The second item are Policy Series B, and what I'm going to do at this time, I'm going to pull Series B. I'm going to ask that the Board members, I believe that Ms. Smith sent us a copy of all the B policies. I do believe that there are some things that we need to reconsider, and I think a few people needed to add some changes, but at the time that these were submitted was actually when we put them in the agenda, was when we were coming back off of the break. So we really have not had adequate enough, an adequate amount of time to look at them. So we're going to pull the Bs, and we'll look at them And that will be the first read on our next agenda. The next item is Policy Series C. This is the first read. Again, there aren't any changes The next item on the agenda is the naming of Elite Scholars Sports Complex. We received, I hope everybody has read this letter, this correspondence that came from Elite Scholars. Basically, what they're asking, Representative Mike Blanton has worked with Elite Scholars since its inception, and the school council and PTA are asking the Board to name, to officially name the sports complex in his honor. It would become the Mike Blanton Royal Knights Sports Complex. So this is for your pleasure. Do we have any discussion regarding the request from Elite Okay, well, we don't have any response. I'm going to say, do we have, is there anyone that is opposed to it? Okay, so it will be on the agenda for our vote next week. Okay, I believe we've covered everything. We're now down to the approval of the agenda for next week. And note that on the agenda, we will be, let me see. I think everything is, because we would have had our last millage meeting, correct? So I think everything is in order. I need a motion, and I believe that I see Mr. Christmas is like to accept the agenda, proposed agenda.
I removed it. We took the proposed agenda for August the 5th.
All right. I see a second, Mr. Striker.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Please vote your pleasure. All right, it is a unanimous vote, and at this time, we are in a German, and we apologize for the length of the meeting. Thank you.